I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which has stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everyone for being here on Zoom or here in person. Maybe the others are just shy. Connie, could you do the roll call?
Okay.
I'm here.
Andy's here, Myland's here, Phil? Whoa, whoa, he's in the waiting room, just a second.
I'll call Lauren.
Okay. Lauren? We're still connecting.
Yeah, we probably jumped again a little bit.
I see you there, say here.
So Lauren is there.
Hello.
Hello.
That worked, okay, I'm here.
Okay. I guess Phil's not there.
Is Kevin on the call?
Yes. We have four, so we have a call.
We're okay. Julie has, is home ill, but she's okay, just didn't feel, think she'll be able to make it. Okay, then we need to excuse Julie. That's all, right? Yeah, that's all.
Mayor, I saw moved that we excused Julie and Phil. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to excuse Julie Buck and Filberto Monteveros from attending this city council meeting for April 5th, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Another thing to do under roll call is probably the most convenient time for Shannon. Shannon Middleton has joined us. Can you show Shannon?
Maybe.
Good looking Phil.
Well, if I don't get him to turn around, right? There him is.
Okay. I'm showing him.
Shannon has resigned, and I did announce at the last council meeting, I just ran over it in my notes. But Shannon has worked over five years as a city councilman in a really good one, and we miss him already. Very knowledgeable on streets and public works and a lot of things. And we're, you can always come in in fives if you want, Shannon. But we appreciate all you've done, and there's a plaque that will be given to you marking the time that you worked in the city council. And I'll get that to you tomorrow, to your office.
Okay, thank you.
Lauren can come back at the next meeting.
That's true.
Oh, you're welcome anytime.
Depends where you put on the agenda.
Thank you, Shannon. Yeah, thank you, very good job, Shannon.
The one, we have, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and the consent agenda for the Goldendale City Council meeting of April 5th, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is Lauren, I looked through it and all looked good, but I wasn't there for that last meeting. So I should probably stay in for the minutes, but I don't know what that does in terms of only having a bare minimum work for them. So looking for advice, I guess.
It just wasn't, it just wasn't approved at the last meeting. They approved the change to the agenda, but they didn't approve the consent agenda. That's why it's on there.
Okay, thank you.
And that was the special report that Larry gives, medal of every month.
Yeah, I don't remember what it was.
That's what it was.
So yeah, we need your vote.
I'll, I'll give you my vote for that.
Okay, thank you.
So the motion passes?
Yes.
Thank you very, very much. We don't have a presentation tonight, but we do have our department reports, and we don't have a report from the police department. But Noah Hallm is on the telephone. He was fighting a fire and hopefully is back home to get on Zoom.
Yep, he's on here.
Great, good. Noah?
I'm here, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna have a number of calls so far this year, but I didn't get it. So, but everything's going good. Me and the mayor are gonna be talking with the county about the ladder truck and trying to move forward with that. And then also, you'll see on the agenda, I'll be talking here in just a second about the equipment purchase.
Noah, this is Lauren, I would like to hear a little bit more about the ladder truck and the discussion with the county.
Yeah, so actually Larry and the mayor actually talked to the county, but we're hoping to get into some grant monies that they have available, and the mayor might be able to know more about that. They have a meeting coming up within, I believe, a couple of months that we're gonna try to go and talk to them about that. They did have a discussion, and they are aware of the city of Goldendale's needs. And from my understanding, they sounded pretty willing to help out with our situation.
Noah, this is Myland, I would like to meet with you sometime and perhaps talk over the ladder truck afterward.
Absolutely.
That'd be great, I'll give you a call.
Okay, yeah, Myland, if you're not busy after the council meeting here, stop by, we're down here, and I can show you.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a couple of questions real quick, sir. How far does the ladder truck reach?
Well, depends on how big you get. Anywhere from 55 foot to, what, 110 foot? We'll be looking at, we'll be looking for a 65 foot to a 75 foot ladder.
Okay, and what is the tallest building we have in the city limits?
Well, it would be the grain elevator, however, we're not gonna find one for that. But we would probably, I'm just guessing on this, but probably the old GBT, the KPH clinics up there, I'm not sure what they call it now, but the building in the hospital.
So three stories at 12 to 13 feet each is, let's go with 13 feet, is 26, 39. And that would be the largest building we have in town?
I don't think that's the case. We have a number of Victorians that are, they sometimes look like two stories or three, but very often they're, and the height floor to ceiling is much higher than that. And so we probably should have had this ladder truck many years ago, but I think.
Probably there's a lot of value in the horizontal extension versus just this little vertical height. And so, you know, obviously, if you have more vertical extension, you lose horizontal height.
Yeah, yeah, so you can look at some of these houses. We had a chimney fire, it's been several years ago, and it was a two-story structure. However, we didn't have a ladder tall enough to safely get on the roof of that residence.
Exactly.
And so this is just a normal two-story building, if you will, that we cannot get on safely. We had the fire on 100 block of railroad due to its construction and how much the fire had already been involved. If we would have had a ladder truck, we could have got in on the top of the roof and potentially put water on the fire better, if that makes any sense.
You know, that completely makes sense and answers my question completely. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Any other questions?
For me, anyway, Noah, Lauren. Through mutual aid, how much would this ladder truck be available to the rural fire district for Friday support in the community?
To be honest with you, as long as we have manpower to man it, it would be available. Typically, you know, we always look at wildland fires. We've gone all over this county for wildland fire mutual aid. And as a matter of fact, we went to when the Underwood Fruit Fire was several years ago in White Salmon. We sent our air band and a command unit down there to help them out of that. So we do, we, it would be out there, that's for sure.
And based on, and based on previous conversations, I do believe that as we throw our people into harm's way, we do make a profit on that as well.
Depending on the circumstances, yes. You know, for the mutual aiding stuff, let's just say White Salmon called us down there again, that would be just a mutual aid agreement. But if we go fight fire for like a wildland fire when it's state mode, they start paying us at a certain time, and that's how we can generate money that way.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep.
Anyone else with a question or comment for Noah? Thank you, Noah, we appreciate the report.
Hey Mayor, I, I'm sorry, I did forgive, yes, we did have a fire today, and I apologize, I'm getting farther ahead of myself, but there was a house fire today, 2:30 East Main. It was, it started right around 1:30, and it was pretty hot. It pretty much destroyed the building, but they got it put out, and everybody was safe, and nobody was in there, so.
Wow.
I forgot to say that, but yes, that did happen today.
Thank you, thank you. That's close to my neighborhood, I'm glad you said something about it. I didn't even realize that it happened. We don't have, I represent the Department of Public Works Department, but we are gonna be presenting something, and Dustin Conroy will take care of that when we get to that point. We appreciate the report though, Noah, very much. The next item will be council business and the first.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Lauren, I did have a question for Public Works, and that was about that engine replacement, where we opted to have our local staff complete the engine replacement in a dump truck. And I was just curious if we could get an update on that at the next meeting, maybe?
Yeah, we can certainly do that, or call Doug and he'll give it to you when you call.
Okay, sounds good.
I know they were working on it, I think they made quite a bit of progress if it's not already done. Thank you, Lauren. The first item on council business is the capital outlay and notice of award for emergency equipment and hoses, and Noah Hallm will present that document. Noah?
Okay, so yeah, the city of Gold, or the fire department, excuse me, is trying to replace hose. One of the things with our insurance rating, some of our hoses, believe it or not, I would say over half of our hoses are over, I think they were, I think the cutoff date is 1984, I believe. Don't quote me on that, but which basically what it means to NFBA if they're built before that, manufactured before that date, they're no good. So I would say over half of our, probably 75% of our hose is before that date. When we purchased 6113, our new engine, we didn't go ahead and buy all new hoses and equipment on that, which, so what the plan was is later on, it's another truck full of equipment. And what I mean by equipment, it'll have hoses, nozzles, ground monitor, and we also got some LED battery-powered sea lighting in the quote. And actually, we bought that for our new truck, and they have come in awesome at night. So I'd like to continue doing that. It is all in this quote that I have. I went after three bids, and MES was the cheapest.
Very good, very good. Any other questions or comments for Noah?
Yes, Kevin, I'm gonna be the same again. Yeah. Did you say 1984?
I believe that's a number. It's either 84 or 87, I, I would have to look that up, but in that vicinity, yes.
So you're telling me that our people, that we send not only in harm's way here in Goldendale, but in the county, but then send out, that we get money to get for their services, they're working with equipment that's before I joined the Navy and retired from the Navy?
So, so yes, so I'll give you a little background. The city of Goldendale used to purchase new trucks every 10 years, and then that new truck did have all brand-new gear. So the last time the city of Goldendale bought a new, well, prior to me, was 1984 or 85, and that truck came equipped with everything. And since that day, everything, for the most part, has just been hand-me-downs from that truck and the previous trucks. So believe it or not, some of my hydrant hoses, I have some hydrant hoses on my third out engine that is from the 60s. So yes, they are old hoses.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
And Kevin? Just for a moment.
This is Lauren, I moved to approve the purchase of the fire hose and equipment for, is it $18,000? For the little, little bit amount.
This is Andy, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded.
I'm on board, yes.
Pardon me? It's been moved and seconded to approve a capital outlay for the purchase of emergency equipment and hoses to the low bidder, MES, in the amount of $18,201.38, 36 cents. Any other questions or comments before we vote? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then everybody, any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, thank you all.
Hey Mayor, this is Noah.
Yes.
I'm getting off here, if you guys have any questions, just feel free to give me a call. And Myland, if you're stopping by, I will be down here.
Sounds good, thanks, Lauren.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And I think at some point, we'll organize a tour for our new council members, because there's unique things on the cost of fire trucks, police cars, and street sweepers that people don't even understand how, that they're not real. They're incredibly expensive because they're being sold to a city, and there's pretty sophisticated pieces of equipment, but.
I know that, I know the fire department would appreciate that and welcome any one of the council members down here anytime. So yes, that would be appreciated.
I think it's very beneficial to each council member to have those items to talk about. And for those people who operate them, like Noah does, that's the same tremendous help for a city councilman to understand some of those finer points of having a fire department and firefighters working. We'll go to the next item on council business, and this is notice of award for the alley sewer replacement project. And Dustin Conroy, our city engineer, will present that. Dusty?
Thank you, Mayor. On last Wednesday, the 31st, we had the bid opening for the water and sewer replacement project in the alley. We received three bids. The lowest bid was $336,000 almost. We had estimated just a little under $200,000 for the project. So everything came in considerably higher than we expected. After some discussion with some of the contractors, it was explained to us that pipe and materials are extremely expensive right now. They've been affected, as well as everyone's busy with lots of projects. So due to that, I recommend that all bids are rejected at this time. Maybe we take a couple of different approaches on how we can make the project more constructible for the contractors and reduce the cost. That's my recommendation.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council or Justin Conroy?
Will this be a problem of rejecting and waiting longer?
Well, the sewer line is still working. We were, this was an opportunity to do it before the county paves that alley. And so we're gonna ask the county to hold off and pave the alley until maybe next summer, and we get a chance to replace that line. If they cannot wait, then we would have some additional expense to cut through that asphalt. But I think it's still a better option than what we were currently presenting.
Right, okay.
This is Lauren, I just need clarification, is this buyer's street or is this the alley between the county building and the south side of Broadway? The buildings on the south side of Broadway?
Yeah, this is the alley behind the new county building.
Okay. And was there any grant funding involved with this?
No grant money involved.
Is there any potential to, what do you think the timeline is to send out new bids and get revised pricing? I just, one of the reasons I ask is that I understand there's some problems with the sewer system and actually backing up in some of those buildings along Broadway. And I, you know, it's a little bit of a long-term problem, something that I've heard concern voiced to me already. And so, I mean, everyone's got issues with construction productivity or availability for contract work or public works, construction and materials prices. I don't, I don't know if that's gonna change in the near or far future, but I hate to see our business owners along Broadway continue to be affected. So just kind of looking for some estimated timelines for new bids or ideas on revisions that might give lower the cost so we can not push it off a full year if we can afford that.
A couple things on that. The sewer line's roughly 10 feet deep, and so that area can be extremely affected by the groundwater table. And so as we get into the fall and winter, it's not ideal time to replace that. It may actually increase the cost even more due to having to pump groundwater and then also trying to install that. So most likely, it is a year push-off. We would probably look at going back out for bid in January or February of next year. Some ideas on that, maybe to help reduce that cost, though, would be to do the pipe expansion. But again, there's quite a few connections in that area. We can't really even camera to see what, where all the live connections are because there is a few bellies. And as soon as you go into the belly where there's the water in the line, you can't, the camera doesn't work anymore, and you can't see connections and everything. So it's kind of tough, it's, it's just one of those things that's kind of tough right now. I don't think it's worth double the cost to proceed.
Kevin Aziz, hand raise.
So I'm trying to, I'm trying to picture this. So we have a pipe that's going from old businesses, our old buildings, but it's 10 feet underground that are leaking back into the buildings. Are they, are they leaking into the ground, the groundwater, into the earth itself? Is there, is there shortcuts, I hate using the word shortcuts, but is there other methods we can take to kind of fix the broken lines so that we're not violating the CFR and other environmental laws?
Well, you're not currently violating those laws because the pipe's not leaking. What happens is the pipe gets plugged, and then it backs up into the buildings through the existing sewers. And so it backs up the line, not, not through leak.
But is that only happening during high groundwater? I don't know. I guess I'd like to see some more work and thought put into it for ideas to maybe try and make something happen sooner this year than, rather than later. But, you know, it's a hard look at our budget, and maybe a rebid on a short timeframe and just see if we can get some sharper pencils put to it or remove some bid elements possibly. But I just, I guess for my part, whatever, a long-term problem that's affected local businesses downtown would be preferable to fix it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of a Band-Aid also. Just for the area that's affected. Since we're not talking about buyer's street, I'll speak on it, but I'm not comfortable with our restaurants that our people are eating at having sewers backing up into their place of business.
I don't, my understanding is that it's been a rare event, and what's caused that to back up is plugging of the line. So it's not, it's not an everyday occurrence, a weekly occurrence, a monthly occurrence. It's on rare occasion has it happened. And granted, anytime, even a rare occasion, you still don't want that to happen. But I don't think, and Doug or someone in Public Works would have to speak more into the frequency of that, but it's not like daily occurrence or weekly, monthly, anything like that.
And I think, to add in, this is my cannon. We will organize a meeting either in the chamber, the county commissioner's chamber, or here to discuss this issue with the county, because they may be able to give us some assistance, since a lot of this will be very, very important to their new building. And I think they'll probably work with us, they've been very helpful in these types of things. So we'll be working on that through this next week or so. And hopefully, we can report back with some progress. But I think it's something that everybody needs to do their best to help with this. Mayor, Shannon, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just gonna say, kind of going with Justin said, or Dustin, sorry. The problem is, if you don't get bids out by January, February at the latest, these companies already have all the work they need. So they'll jack their price way up because they basically know you're desperate. And if we were to put a bid out, say, a month from now, it would probably be, I can almost guarantee, higher than what he's already got. Because at this point, this time of the, this point in time of the.
We might not track, ensure that fast another project falls through, or if the bid items are revised, we might be able to find something cheaper. But we know this is coming for a long time. And, you know, I mean, we don't want to put off the county or our business owners to wait longer. So it's just a difficult environment right now in terms of material costs and contract cost. So hopefully, you can find some other solutions to address that. But I agree absolutely, Shannon, like, you know, the sooner you can get a contract out for bid and more lifeguarding, you get a lower, more competitive price. But obviously, as a small community, we have limited staff and so many things to do. So a lot of things take priority.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we need a proposal on this motion, whether to reject or what action to be taken.
I'll make the motion to move to reject all bids for the alley sewer replacement project regarding bid opening held on March 3, 2021.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to reject all bids for the valley, for the alley sewer replacement project regarding bid openings held March 31. project regarding bid openings held March 31, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
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 This is Lauren, I'm opposed. I'd rather see some more work in discussion with the county. I wouldn't mind participating in that if, if there's an opportunity. But I think we'd like to see a bit more work on this to reject the bids and leave our only opportunities to be addressed in a year out from now.
So we have a majority voting to reject. One city councilman wanting to delay the decision, but I think the work of discussing with the county and city and trying to get this resolved, I think will solve the problem that you're talking about, Lauren. It will move quicker rather than later. I promise you that. With that, the motion passes three to one.
So I can figure it gets passed now?
Yes.
Okay, so all I wanted to say to close this up is, once again, we had a grand idea how to fix the problem. It's going to cost us a lot of money. We need to find a Band-Aid for now, fix it. And I know you and Larry will work on it, okay, how we fix it. But I don't want to drop this off on paper. You need to follow up on it because the businesses are not happy. But paying three or five times the amount for one job, I just don't find acceptable right now. And it's not fair to our tax, to the taxpayers in the county or in the city.
Exactly, Kevin. It's not, for a rural community such as ours, it's just not a possibility as high as they put the prices. But we will work, find other solutions as best we can. We'll move on now to reporter officers and city administrator. And we'll begin with Andy Pomm.
The only thing I have, had a couple citizens approached me about the intersection of Collins and Roosevelt, particularly when you're going northbound on, during the business week, how many cars are parked on the east side of that. And you can't see out into the street until you actually pull out.
Exactly.
And some people have already been almost hit. And I think the city maybe needs to look at something in that intersection. I don't know if a four-way stop would work or what would work to make the intersection better, but-
This is Collins and-
Collins and Roosevelt.
Okay, thank you.
And then, and one person that approached me about it said they saw kids crossing and they didn't see cars. And so there's that issue also. So that's all I have.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Lauren? Do you have any comments here?
Yeah, the similar topic as Andy. You know, we received some great feedback from the public about crosswalk painting earlier in the year, or actually, I guess it was late last year. But just wondering if we could continue that effort, especially on the main corridors, Columbus, Simcoe and Broadway. As, you know, it's, it's getting busier and with summer or the weather's warming up towards the more pedestrian bicycle traffic. So hopefully Public Works is still working on the painting those crosswalks and making them clear. And then additionally, just hoping we can get some broad spread discussion and announcements, public announcements about recruitment for filling Shannon's place and just hoping to get several applicants in there. I don't know if that's going to be an appointment process or if at this time in the cycle, if we wait for the election process before that position is filled.
Normally, what will be happening, and it may have already been prepared, is a notice in the newspaper calling for anyone that's interested in serving us on city council. And then whenever that's done, we'll review those applications, but they will, they will each one be able to meet and be, receive questioning from the city council before we select. And it could be, we have a half dozen, we don't know. But we do need to get this resolved quickly. So the process has begun.
Thank you, Mayor. And lastly, just, for my, just, we need to keep thinking about succession planning for Larry and others, you know, in the next year or so here and maybe thinking about some positions to come in early and start training so that it's a smooth transition process. And we don't end up trying to fill a vacancy that is then difficult to get folks up to speed and trained on. So maybe a topic for a near future meeting.
Exactly right. We will, we will have more discussions. We've been, already been discussing it for at least a couple of months and we've been aware of it for years to start with, the dates for these particular city officers that will be retiring. And we've had one interview for a city administrator applicant, so that's, process has started. And it's a particular post that is very, very complicated to be able to replace a highly experienced city manager with somebody that may just be beginning their career. The competition should be pretty stiff between other city administrators that might be applying. We're hoping that will be the case and we can find another as, as experienced as Larry and Connor.
I didn't, I wasn't aware that that had been advertised, but we have an advertisement out to fill the position already?
No, it's been drafted, but not advertised.
Hope we're already given interviews?
No, we didn't give an interview.
You don't do the, we don't do the interviews until we have an official request for interviews, our applications. It's just a process that is required. Any other comments or questions on that? If not, we'll go on to Mylan.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Well, just a quick comment on the Goldendale Chamber. They're coming along very well. I think they're going to have a busy, exciting summer. They're really working at it and we feel that they're great potential of what they could do this summer.
Good. Yeah, it's going to be a busy summer, I think, so particularly we can stay at phase three.
Right, exactly.
Kevin, I haven't called on you, have I?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Did I call on you for a council report?
Not yet.
No, I don't realize I saw anything like that.
I figured we'd at least get a weather report.
The weather report is, I woke up this morning at six degrees and it was 77 degrees.
Oh, that's terrible.
Yeah.
That's just awful.
Just awful.
Yeah.
You have to realize, Kevin, the sun here gets here, the least compassion we are about your temperatures.
We were close to 37, weren't we?
Yeah.
Oh, good. No, no, we're not doing that here, but, you know, we're pushing 100 right now, which is a little, it's a little warm.
Well, just stay in the shade.
You know, one little thing on that. They offer down here where my parents are, they offer a lot of tax-free stuff and things along those lines for solar panels on, on houses. And I know in the winter we don't get too much sun, but we do get some sun. But in the summer, we get tons of sun. Does Washington State offer any benefits to putting solar panels on their roof and lowering the cost of electricity?
It's something we can discuss, but it's a very complicated matter as far as the PUD charges and the sources of funds to provide activities like putting on solar panels unless there's a cost sharing of some sort. But we, it's something we can discuss and we'll give it to one of the committees that would be appropriate for discussing that type of item. It's not something we don't, that we want to put away. We should be thinking about how we might help people that are in particularly dire straits in this community.
Mayor, once again, I'm going to be the pain, but SpaceX is now offering high-speed internet from satellite. I know it's a little expensive buyout or buy-in. Have we looked at if it would be better for us rather than using the internet that is always dying in Goldendale or our police fire department, city council, or even our local businesses to jump on the SpaceX panel wagon?
Keep in mind, where you're at right now is a completely different part of the world economically. And there's not a whole lot we're going to be able to do to match that up.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay.
I guess, this is Lauren, if I can have a couple of follow-up comments. One is that there's two companies that are operating in the area, so we have seen some improvements in internet connectivity. And that's probably thanks to some of the work that the city of Goldendale and the county did to do some assessments and studies to try and improve broadband access. So it's been great to see both GorgeNet and OTC putting in installations around the city and county. So we're seeing better internet access for our residents, which is great. And then the other item is that on the solar topic, you know, there's been, there's been some discussion in the committee about solar projects and I think, you know, just like pump storage, maybe we should have one of our subcommittees look at that and, and think about ways that that could have positive and negative impacts, whether it's a tax revenue income that can help support our hospitals or schools or potentially negative environmental impacts. But we may want to take a look at that and be able to take a position like we have with pump storage.
A lot of these things, because they're very big projects, have a lot of side effects that can be very, very helpful for us. And you're right, Lauren, the internet capacity we have within the city is quite good because of companies like OTC and GorgeNet and others that are investing more and more to provide this. When you talk to people that live just outside of Goldendale, it's a totally different story and they're very, very limited on any kind of phone up service that they can get. So we're quite fortunate to have what we have and the county is trying to provide something along the line of what we have countywide. So it's, it's something that the county's working on very strenuously to be able to improve this countywide to where we have decent bandwidth and internet speed. So that's just kind of the underlying part of that. I appreciate everybody's discussion too. Good, lively discussion is a huge help for a city council. I have two things I want to bring up. One of them, I was contacted by Pastor Greg Howell from here in Goldendale. He was involved at the centennial celebration for Goldendale, the 100 year. And we will have the 150 year celebration next year. And at the 100th, Goldendale had a coin that had a dollar value to it. It was financially supported by a number of people with, with larger businesses in town. But that was given out as souvenirs or mementos of the 100th year celebration of Goldendale. He thinks that would be a very good idea and I agree. That's one of the things we do at the 150th year to keep marking the years of this age of this city. But I'm also wanting to form a special committee and a special committee has a timeline on it. Once we get past the 150th year celebrations, we won't have that committee continue. But I think we need to build a strong aspect of the history of Goldendale over the entire 150 years of important things, as well as how it started, what the struggles have been, what some of the calamities have been, such as burning down most of the city. Number of things like that, I think, will be of interest to get the community more involved in understanding Goldendale and all that makes Goldendale, as well as other types of events that the chamber would be interested in. And I'm sure Presley Mansion would be interested in doing something on the historic side. Our historical society, I think, can contribute to that. But Pastor Howell had a very, very good start with the coin, the commemorative coin for the 150th anniversary of Goldendale. And I think we should pursue that with this committee. And I'll be giving you more details at the next council meeting. Hopefully we'll have a program begun on that for you. The other item is a proclamation that I need to read out. This is something that I was approached by one of the national organizations on, that wanted to bring attention to the National Infertility Awareness Week. It's going to be nationwide and we will be recognizing that in Goldendale from April 18th to the 24th. And what this is, is, and I'm not going to give all the details here, I'll make sure Roger gets a copy of it, but there's a number of different things about modern life and the environment and a number of things that we have within our world here that affects people's ability to have a child. That's, that's going to be an absolute family tragedy when they realize that's not possible for them. And this particular awareness is to help more people understand the plight that some people go through. And this, it touches on not only husband and wife and their efforts to raise a family, but also the LGBTQ community. They have similar challenges in certain ways to building their family as well as other issues. And so I've written this proclamation to put it out, that we will recognize National Fertility Awareness Week in Goldendale from April 18th through the 24th. I think we need to have compassion and interest and understanding for people who struggle with this particular limitation and challenge in their lives. And that's all I had on any of those aspects. Are there questions or comments? If not, we'll go to public comment. So anybody on the line that would like to make a public comment or in the, in the council room? We have one, we have two people in the council room. Yes.
I guess I'll add to the coin.
Let him up, Larry. Can you step over there?
Yeah, please come up. It's not a punishment.
It may be.
You turned the camera around for Shannon.
He's special.
All I was going to say is that coin that I brought here one of the times when we met before, that was one of the coins. I don't know that it was given away unless somebody bought it and gave it away, but it was backed up by the banks for a certain period of time. And I think where they made their money is people like me that didn't spend that, that we kept that so that they, they sold the coin but never had to redeem it.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah. And that was a, obviously a popular program with me because I kept one of them. Also, your proclamation, don't forget about adoption.
Yes.
Or taking foster care kids that, you know, not like the dog pound that nobody else wants.
Yes.
That's how we got our-
Yeah, it's a tragic thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Finding support for foster children or carried out adoptions, you're right.
Yeah, taking ones that somebody else had that didn't want.
And often that really solves the family's crisis if they have this issue.
Well, it certainly helps the kids that are involved.
Absolutely, it certainly does.
Larry, did you recall the volume, how many coins they made? I was 12 then. I have one. I think my dad has a number of them. He probably does too. He and I were the same age.
Pastor Howell is a coin collector and he'll know for sure.
Oh, okay. I bet Roger knows too.
Yes, I'm sure he does.
I, I think he'd be good for tourism, have a $150 coin, people coming through.
Not a $150 coin.
No, I meant 150 year, yeah.
That's more like-
Yeah, at inflation, you know, like-
Yes, yeah. Good. But I am hoping we can really build a good celebration of this 150th year anniversary. I think it's worthwhile for the people in Goldendale and it should help us to build more community pride than we sometimes see in our community.
What's Larry's retirement date?
I can get one for sure.
It's about a year away, right?
We're going to retire at the same time.
Well, what time are you retiring?
I'm retiring- I'm retiring the end of July next year.
Okay, I'm always waiting for the next year.
I don't know if he's staying longer after that, but I'm going in July.
I'm referring, he was gonna retire right before it all happened, so he didn't have to deal with it.
I'm telling you, you can't do that.
Because when I showed him the coin, he, uh, yeah.
Thanks, everybody, this-
Roger has his hand up, Kevin has his hand up.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roger.
Uh, thank you. Um, in Wasco County, at the 150th, they did a coin like that, and it sold very well and made money for the county. People kept them as souvenirs, so, uh, I think that's a good thing. My only question is, I look behind you and I see 1879.
That's my question.
150 years, doesn't come up till 29? Where does 150 come from?
I got it when Pastor Howell, uh, called me about it and said that's coming up next year, so I'll look and find out more detail of why it's that, because I had the same question.
Yeah, okay, that's it, thanks.
And if we can celebrate it, we will. And Kevin had something?
Yes, Kevin.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, I grew up in a town down here that, um, has been around for a very, very long time, and they were not incorporated as a city. I'm guessing the 1879 was the year they got incorporated, but they probably have been here for a long time, Mr. Nichols. I want to follow up on not just the coin thing, can we push this into the schools? Can we push this into a learning experience and motivating our children? Um, and even to the, the adults, I mean, can we make this an entire parade, give or take COVID? Um, but I, I'm thinking right now is the time to ask that question, Mr. Mayor, and I digress because we all want to go to bed.
Couldn't it be something we could celebrate at community days, maybe?
It could be, and particularly could be at least, uh, explain when it's gonna happen and cover it this community days and then celebrate it the next.
I think in 1972, a big portion of the celebration was community days and then at the fair.
And that, that gives a nice touch to that whole part of the year.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Roger.
Yeah, I want to thank Kevin because obviously it's when it was founded as opposed to when it was incorporated, that's probably what the difference is.
That's it.
The other quick question I had is, is there a deadline for people to apply for the new open position on the community council, the city council?
I, I don't think that has been placed yet, and part of it was because I had forgotten to announce that Shannon had resigned from the city council, and we didn't want to jump ahead of that news. Uh, so it'll be coming out probably next week.
Okay, thank you.
With a fairly short timeline. And if you have people that you think would be interested in serving on city council, let them know about it and just watch for the announcement. And when they apply, they just apply with a simple letter explaining their desire to serve and why they think they should be appointed to city council. So if you could, uh, anyone that you're interested in doing that, let them know the details. Thanks, Kevin. Any other comments or questions before we close the meeting? If not, we have a motion to close city council for April 5th.
I'll make that motion. I'll look at it.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn city council for April 5th, 2021. Our next meeting will be April 19th, 7:00 PM, and again, it will be both in-person, Zoom, and telephone. And that's a long-term thing that we hope to provide people interested in attending as well as council members and staff, uh, that have some concern about being in the room with, uh, this type of pandemic going on. Do we have a vote on adjournment?
Aye. Aye.
I think everybody else is gone.
I know, I'm, I'm voting aye, but I will also say that it's funny how fast the motion and the second and the ayes went for adjournment.
I've noticed that a number of times, Kevin, you're right. Good night.